Good afternoon and welcome to the June 3 meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. This flag salute will be read by Councilmember Ara Najarian. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation by Chaplain Al Garcilaso of Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are grateful to be here tonight at the city council meeting and just pray that you will bless every aspect of this meeting. Please bless and guide our mayor, our city council members, all the city staff and employees, as well as all those who live and work in Glendale. And on this election day, we especially pray for wisdom and insight. May the decisions and choices that are made today benefit our city, our county, our state, as well as our federal government. Now fill us with your spirit and grant us your peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. May we have the report, Mr. Clerk?
Agenda for the June 3, 2014, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, May 30, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3 A is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 10, 2014.
Ms. Beers?
Mayor Sinanian, members of the city council. For the Glendale Housing Authority for June 10, we have no business agenda items. We do have a Glendale City Council meeting in the, I'm sorry, for the evening, and we have just a few consent items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, elevator maintenance contract consolidation. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is unit number four boiler tube repairs at the Grayson Power Plant. Under action items, we have one item, Director of Human Resources. This is regarding the retirement slash separation incentive program. And lastly, we have a hearing, Director of Community Development regarding appeal of Historic Preservation Commission condition of approval of design review case number 1407206 for property located at 1720 Grandview Avenue. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. What's next?
At 3 B is Mayor's Commendation to the Glendale Humane Society in recognition of their 90th anniversary.
Great. And who do we have from the Glendale Humane Society?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Alice.
Hi.
My name is Jeannie Flint, and I've been a resident for 57 years here in Glendale. I'm a product of Glendale schools, and I was a Glendale Unified School District teacher and principal for 28 years. Since my retirement, I've been a community volunteer, and I'm currently a member of the Glendale Humane Society Board of Directors. On behalf of the Glendale Humane Society, I thank you for asking us here tonight. Glendale Humane has a seven-member board, and with me this evening are three other board members, Alice Russell, our much-loved executive director, and board members Sarah Goldberg and Linda McMenamin. You're supposed to raise your hand. We are a working board, and all of us participate in the running of the shelter. Also with us is Jenny Wilt. I call Jenny our shelter volunteer extraordinaire. Glendale Humane was established in 1924 and has been a no-kill shelter since 2002. We house approximately 30 dogs and 10 cats, and most of our dogs are rescued from high-kill shelter facilities. But we do occasionally accept dogs and cats from private individuals. We assume responsibility for all the animals we rescue, providing wholesome food, shelter, veterinary care, humane interaction, and love, taking care of them as long as it takes while we search for their best possible home ever. We at Glendale Humane are all about education, with our goal being to foster a positive relation between people and their pets. We help prepare each adopter for the responsibility of dog and cat ownership through our canine parenting class, which is taught by Alice. Stop by sometime. It is incredible. She is a great teacher. This is a requirement, this class, for all of our adopters and is open to the public. So if you're having trouble with your dog, come on by. Alice will put her class on for you. Glendale Humane relies strongly on volunteers to walk, train, and socialize our dogs and to interact with our cats. We have a volunteer named Karen, who, the first time I visited the shelter, I looked in the cat room, and there is Karen reading to the cats, with one hanging over the perch above her, one sitting in her lap, one sitting tall in front of her, and one wandering around the room, just like a classroom, I thought. Each of our staff and volunteers complete a training program before working one-to-one with our dogs. We're all on the same page. We all use the same wording and commands to teach basic manners. Each of our rescued animals are cared for and assessed by trainers, experienced staff, our veterinarian during a required two-week quarantine. Our dogs are taken out several times every day for walks up and down the street, to the potty pad, and to our bark yard, which is across the street from the shelter, where they practice training techniques, they play, explore, or just wander about freely, always with adult supervision. The bark yard is also introduced when our potential adopters come, and all the two-legged and four-legged family members of these potential adopters meet in the bark yard to see if they are well-suited to each other. After a dog is adopted and is settled in as a part of the adoption fee, we send a trainer to the home for a one-hour session to answer questions or address concerns. As a nonprofit organization, Glendale Humane relies solely on private donations and receives no funds from local, state, or federal government. On Friday, June 20, we will be celebrating with a 90th anniversary fundraiser at Perch on Brand Boulevard in Glendale. There will be delicious food, wine and whiskey tastings, and other libations, live music, caricatures, a magician, bidding on silent auctions, and don't forget to bring a photo of your pet for a psychic greeting. We hope this fundraising celebration will help to ensure as many dogs and cats as possible through the work of Glendale Humane can continue to receive a second chance for a quality life and the permanent loving home they deserve. Mayor Sinanian, council members, and friends, so much hope, love, and happiness have wagged through the Glendale Humane Society doors since 1924. It's been 90 years, and it's time to celebrate. You each have an invitation. We hope you will attend our 90th celebration on June 20. Please join us in supporting the Glendale Humane Society, a no-kill, nonprofit, tiny but mighty organization that has been saving animals for 90 years. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your dedication and your volunteering. And I unfortunately will be unable to attend on June 20. I'll be out of the country. But in recognition of your efforts to make humanity a little more humane every day, I know it's been 90 years, but we have a long way to go, prepared a commendation which I'd like to read for you.
Great.
"Glendale Humane Society, congratulations on the 90th anniversary celebration of the Glendale Humane Society. In recognition of your ability to help bring people and pets together, thank you for providing the animals with a comfortable, clean, and safe environment to live in until they're found, they're found a permanent home. The city of Glendale appreciates your valuable contribution to the community and look forward to many more years of success." Thank you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Glendale Humane Society, we thank you very much for that. When you come to our shelter to get one of our perfect dogs, you will see that in the entryway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or perfect cats, excuse me.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you so much.
That's from the mayor. So we have an additional item on the presentation's appointments that's not on the agenda. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. And may it please the council, I'd like to talk to you and the community tonight about the future of the Department of Public Works, but in talking about the future, I need to begin with Steve Zern. Steve Zern has been with the city for, I believe, 27, 28 years entirely with the Department of Public Works, close to a decade at the helm, or even more than a decade.
Eleven.
Eleven. Only feels like 10. At the helm of Public Works Department. And certainly, as much as anyone, perhaps more than than anyone in recent memory, has put his stamp on to that department, both in the culture of leadership and execution, but most certainly in leading with his heart and being the kind of guy that Glendale residents and businesses can count on. He truly bleeds Glendale green. But the time has come for Steve to transition over entirely into his latest challenge that we have tasked him with, which is to lead GWP. And he's done a yeoman's job, being the man on the spot when we needed him a couple of years ago, to lead that department out of the wilderness and into a bright future. And he's doing that now. And as they embark on a couple of new, very interesting and very complex projects, we've asked him to focus all of his energies there. And that is difficult, no two ways about it, but I think it's made a little less difficult by way of introduction of the man that will take his spot come July 1. That man is currently our deputy director and city engineer, Mr. Rubik Galanian. Now, Rubik's been with us for about 14 years. He is very well-accomplished, very well-respected as a leader in public works departments, a leader in engineering. He has a degree in engineering and a master's degree in organizational leadership and management. He is a well-rounded man that will lead this department into the future as Steve makes that handoff. He is very close to, he lives in the immediate vicinity and certainly has eyes on Glendale 24/7 almost, and is a big, big believer in our values-based management. And so with that, I would like to introduce you and the community, provided that the council is willing to support this appointment to our new Director of Public Works, Mr. Rubik Galanian, as he goes to write the next chapter in public works and their legacy. So with that, humbly and respectfully ask for your support, sir.
All right. Do we have a motion to that effect?
And it will be my honor to read the motion. I move that pursuant to Article 4, Section 4, and Article 24, Section 5.2 of the Glendale City Charter and Government Code, Section 5.4957.1A, the council hereby, only an engineer would be able to decipher this, the council hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Rubik Galanian as the Director of Public Works. Further, this motion shall be written, statement of appointment of a person of recognized attainment, as set forth in Charter, Article 24, Section 5.2, pursuant to Article 24, Section 10 of the city charter. The Civil Service Commission shall certify Mr. Galanian's appointment to the direct, by the Director of Administrative Services.
And as a fellow engineer, I'm happy to second that.
Roll call, please.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Quintero.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, let me just allow me, please, to say how deeply honored I am for to be appointed as your new Director of Public Works, unprivileged for this incredible opportunity to join an outstanding executive team under the tremendous leadership of Mr. Ochoa. Also, I'd like to express my gratitude to Mr. Zern for his guidance and support over the many, many years that we worked together. I have worked for him. And for being a great director, for a great department for 11 years. I have very big shoes to fill. Our department, that I've been a part of nearly 14 years, as well as, for that matter, the city of Glendale, have many, many dedicated and hard-working employees who take pride in their work and in the delivery of exceptional service to the community. I thank you for putting your trust in me. I'll do my utmost every day to justify your trust, and I'll lead our teams in the successful delivery of services, our projects, and to maintain our critical infrastructure, and along with the other departments, to enhance the quality of life for all of our visitors, residents, and the businesses alike. With that, last but not least, I'd like to introduce my family who are here and to thank them for their love and support, my lovely wife, Maria. Our three wonderful boys, and the source of my daily inspiration, Christopher. My dear mother, Ojik, and my wonderful in-laws, Angel and Vic. My three sisters who are watching this on TV, and some of my staff and my colleagues and friends who are in the audience. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to say too much about this because this unanimous vote and the fact that the city manager and Mr. Zern have obviously imparted so much confidence in you speaks for itself. So Godspeed, good luck, and we were certain you're going to deliver excellent results. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is city council and staff comments.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Rubik, take your family, go have a nice dinner. Take your, oh, you've got to stay. No, wait.
You have items on the agenda.
I forgot, you've got four items.
You already said that already.
Your family can go. I forgot, you have four items tonight. Aw, man. Now, the other thing I talked to Mayor about, messed up, I didn't get what I needed, and that is, I wanted to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Dr. John Davitt, who died. Attended his funeral Saturday, or Sunday? Saturday. Saturday. And I don't have a bio, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting next week in his memory. Suffice to say that the funeral, there was over 500 people there from all over the state of California. He was highly, highly recognized, and there's no way he can adjourn this meeting in his memory without going through some of his achievements in his career. So your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'll do it next week.
Yes, Mr. Weaver, certainly. So you want it next week, not this week? Because you'd like to have the bio.
I fully can read it.
Certainly. Yes. Mr. Quintero?
In case the public at home didn't catch it, Mr. Galanian will be staying here tonight along with the rest of us. Still the wee hours, I have, I have a feeling, since senior staff always has to be here for the different presentations, but his three little future, they look, I've been around them enough, they look, nah, not engineers, I think they're bachelors of arts, and anyway, congratulations. Well, I had, I attended the California High-Speed Rail presentation that took place in Burbank, and as we all know, we're working through the details, but of specific interest to the city of Glendale and Mr. Najarian's well-acquainted, the Blended Plan calls for total upgrades of some of the trains that are, the MTA runs and Amtrak runs, double tracking that Mr. Najarian has been working on for years. But for the layperson, let's just say that this California High-Speed Rail is going to be more than just a connection between San Francisco and LA, but in fact, this blended approach in the coming years is going to provide lots of connectivity, and it's going to work out very well for those people that take trains and other transit forms, public transit.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero? Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Let's see. It was about two weeks ago, I believe, that I announced that we had gone to Washington to sign the funding agreement for the West Side Subway and Downtown Regional Connector, and that was basically a $2.1 billion award we received from Washington. And then someone spotted out, when are you going to get the connection between the Bob Hope Airport, the Gold Line, and the Orange Line? So, under the topic, under the heading of "You Asked For It," I am very happy to announce that the MTA Board approved my motion last week to develop and immediately implement an express bus service, which is the BRT, which is a precursor to a light rail between the Red and Orange Line stations in North Hollywood, Bob Hope Airport, the city of Burbank, the city of Glendale, and the Gold Line in Pasadena. So staff is going to be working on the finishing touches on this, but it is the first concrete step approved by the MTA unanimously, and perhaps all those thousands of residents that we're bringing downtown now can have a transit connection to the light rail system and the entire transit network that LA County has to offer.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. Something I went to this week, and Mayor Sinanian was there as well, which was the opening of Camp Max Strauss, which is run by the Jewish Federation. This is a camp that's here in Glendale in the Whiting Woods area that is, I believe, free for disadvantaged children from all around the Los Angeles area. And they serve 1,700 children each summer. I think it was 1,700.
Seventeen hundred.
And what they did this weekend was, not only did they send these kids to sleepaway camp for a week, they don't have all 1,700 at once, they do them in week shifts, but at the beginning of the summer, last Saturday, they give them all of the supplies they need for camp. So there were 1,700 children and their parents there in lines to get shampoo, soap, clothing, shoes, T-shirts, bug repellent, although I don't think you need that here as much as you do when I went to summer camp on the East Coast and you kind of get eaten alive. And also things that weren't camp-related, like books. They had, Cedar Sinai had their health truck to give checkups to the kids, dental checkups, eye exams, run basic health screenings on them. It was really an amazing day. The kids had a great time. They had, in the middle of their field, dance competition where the kids would dance. Someone, the music stopped, they had to freeze, and they would get prizes. And the parents looked very happy to see this beautiful facility that their kids would be going to for a week. It was all run by volunteers, and they were so happy to be able to provide this to these children. It's part of their Big Brother, Big Sister program that they operate around Los Angeles. They advertised for it, I think, in LAUSD and in many other venues. Obviously, very appreciated, well-attended. There were a couple thousand people there, probably 3,000 when we were there, you know, kind of shuffle, going in and out. So I wanted to let the public know that this exists because a lot of people don't realize that this is right here in our community, offering this really incredible service to the greater Los Angeles area, to its children, and to wish all of the campers a really happy and fun summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. And the only thing I'll add to that is that the degree of organization was extremely impressive, and Jewish Federation is looking, foundation is looking to couple with whatever Glendale organizations that may be willing to work with them in order to provide this facility and their services also to the children in Glendale. I think it's wonderful news and very welcome.
One last thing, since none of us said it, I don't think. It's not too late to vote. Today's a very important election, both county and statewide, but particularly here in Glendale, for your city council seat, the soon-to-be-vacated seat held for many years by Mr. Quintero. So please, if you haven't done so already, this is the most basic of, most important civic duty that we have. People around the world die for this right. In countries where voting is a challenge, and so let's not take it for granted, I heard on the LA Times today that they're expecting a record-low turnout. And one of our housing board members was in earlier, and she's a precinct worker, and she said their percentage, right as of this afternoon, of people showing up to vote was 3%. 3%. So, if you can hear my voice, and you're not hearing it tomorrow, or in one of the repeats, if you're hearing it tonight on Tuesday, on June 3, and you haven't voted yet, there's still plenty of time. You have two more hours, an hour and a half, so please get to the polls and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I'm going to follow up on that. Please go out and vote, please, because this is not only your civic duty, but it's, this is a privilege. This is a privilege that many millions and millions of people throughout the world would love to have, to actually vote and determine their own future. And millions of people in this country would love to have that privilege, become citizen and shape their own future. So let's not squander it. Let's go out and vote. And another thing is that over a million Americans have given their lives in order for us to have our lifestyles and in order for us to have our civic liberties and the ability to vote. So I'm referring back to the Memorial Day, two weeks ago. We had two events in the city of Glendale, probably more than two events. Two events that I attended along with council members Friedman, Najarian, I believe. Oh, you were out of town. You weren't there, but Mr. Quintero was there also. And the one at Montrose, as always, very nice, very solemn, the one at City Hall, also wonderful. It's a great, great opportunity for all of us to remember how this country was shaped and how it's been kept safe. One thing I was very disappointed with was light attendance and the lack of children. I would like more children to be there because I think they need to learn from, from a young age that there's a price to be paid for what we have. And again, I'm just hoping that next year, more people will show up, more people will show their appreciation for the sacrifices that have been made. On another note, I do want to nominate, renominate, Ospeyt Tatulian as my Building and Fire Board Commissioner. So I guess we put that on the agenda for the 24th. And the reason I say the 24th is because I will be taking my children on vacation next two weeks and will be absent. So I do apologize and ask for your understanding for my absence. And last week, we had a great police explorers fundraiser, Glendale Police Explorers Fund fundraiser, great turnout, which is very good, and very impressive group of young men and women training to become our police officers of the future. Very worthy cause to support because, again, these individuals are sort of the, the way we groom young individuals to become our police officers. And finally, I promise to do this, on June 8, there's going to be the first annual comedy show, Laugh for a Cause, which is meant to raise awareness and funds for autism, and it will be at the John Lovitz Comedy Club. We have flyers, I believe, that we can pass out to all those who are interested. Again, June 8, 2014, at 7:30, there's relevant information. The flyer, for whatever odd reason, doesn't indicate where the comedy club is, but I get the impression that it's.
CityWalk.
At CityWalk, yes. So it is at CityWalk, 7:30 on June 8, 2014. Okay, those are all the comments we have. What's next?
Mayor Sinanian, if I may actually add, since Councilmember Friedman was kind enough to remind everyone that's Election Day, if there's anyone who's wondering where their polling place is, they may go to lavote.net/locator, or there is links on lavote.net. The URL is up there on the screen. And this evening, after the polls close, for those wishing to follow the election results, we ask that they don't come down to Glendale City Hall, because there will be no ballots here. Everything is being transported to the County of Los Angeles Registrar and Recorder's offices, which are located in Norwalk, where all the votes will be tabulated and tallied. And it may be sometime before we have the final results, or at least into the wee hours before we have the first numbers. If anyone wishes to follow those results, they may do so via the Internet by either going to glandavotes.org and following the link, which will link them to the county's website. Or, again, they can go to lavote.net and follow the results directly through there. And the only other thing I'd like to add is congratulations to all our high school graduates today. A lot of our youngest, brightest, some of our student ambassadors, you noticed, are not here today in City Hall. It's because they're with their families and at their campuses, celebrating an important life accomplishment as they turn over a leaf and start a new chapter in their life. So congratulations to everyone, and in some shameless promotion of my alma mater, go Glendale High School Nitros. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
I think that we need to check the link. I don't know if it's from Glendale Votes, but from the city's website, that front link that goes to the county, instead of going to LA Vote, it goes to LAT Vote, which doesn't exist. So there's an incorrect link. If you go to the city's website and click the election button, and then click the one that's supposed to take you to the county, I did it a little while ago, it didn't work and I didn't know why, and now that I know the actual URL, I realize that ours is incorrect on our website.
When we checked it, it was working fine, but we'll double-check.
Double-check, because I just did it maybe an hour ago, just by clicking. I didn't type anything in.
And the last thing from me, actually. I'd like to adjourn today in the memory of poetess Alicia Kiragosian, passed away last week. She was unfortunately battling cancer. She was born in Argentina, in Cordoba, in 1936, and she wrote poetry in Spanish, in Italian, in Armenian, and in English. And she was actually a resident since the mid-'80s. So we'll adjourn in her memory. Next item?
Next item is the Consent Calendar. Following our routine and may be acted upon by one motioning member of council or the audience, requests in separate consideration may do so by making such request for a motion as proposed.
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item?
Next item, under item number six, is the Oral Communications. This is a three-minute portion reserved for community event announcements.
One second. Yes, and we have one speaker, well, two speakers, actually, our own chief, Fire Chief Skoggins and Sharon Townsend. And they've asked for three minutes. Three minutes jointly, or?
We can speed talk.
All right. Okay.
Hi, we're just here this evening to remind you that there's a wonderful event coming up this Saturday. Back in the fall of this previous year, a foundation board was begun to support the works and the needs of the Fire Department. And this Saturday, in the Glendale Galleria, we have our first inaugural event, and 28 of our finest firefighters will be walking the runway. Chief Skoggins can tell you a little bit more about that.
Well, this should be a lot of fun. Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, members of the council, Mr. Ochoa. This Saturday is going to be a lot of fun. You know, we do a lot of things in the city, in the community, and I get to see a lot of the good work that our firefighters do with fighting fires and vehicle accidents and EMS calls. This will be a little bit different. They will be modeling the latest wares from Bloomingdale in order to help raise funds for our foundation, to help meet some of the needs that we see out here in the community and in the organization. It'll start at 1:00 in the afternoon. We have a fun-filled day planned for everyone who attends. We have VIP events in the store itself. Sparky's going to be there. We have a kid set up. In Bloomingdale's, we have the Spock Gourmet and Phoenisha are going to be catering a little VIP reception and photo opportunities and things like that. The foundation was born out of the thoughts of a few friends. One of them is here with us tonight, Mr. Harry Hall, Paige White, and Zavin Kazazian. A few friends of the Fire Department who got together and said, "Hey, chief, what do you think about doing this?" It was about last June when we actually started sitting down, writing our bylaws and our articles, and today we're getting ready to kick off our first event. So it's really exciting, and I'd like to thank our board members for all the support that they have for their Fire Department.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks. Thanks, chief. And I am here representing our Board of Directors. Thank you very much for allowing us to tell you about the event that's coming up. It's the first event of the Glendale newly formed Glendale Fire Foundation. You're going to be hearing a lot about the foundation. We have some great plans for some neat things to go on in the city that you're going to really like. So, behalf of our board, thank you.
Are you planning on a calendar with these models?
Yeah, we've got to see how this fashion show goes, you know? It's, but it's going to be a great show.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, what's next, Mr. Cleary?
There are no more cards for this portion.
None.
The next item is adoption of ordinances. 7A is ordinance approving a development agreement by and between the city of Glendale and Wilson, Maryland McSous, LLC, a Delaware limited liability company in connection with the proposed Lemley Lofts project to be located at 111 East Wilson Avenue and 215 North Maryland Avenue. This was proposed on May 27, 2014, by Councilmember Quintero.
Move the item?
Second. Anyone? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next.
7B is an ordinance providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the city of Glendale, establishing an officer position in the city of Glendale until Director of Communications and Community Relations Executive. This was offered on May 20, 2014, by Councilmember Weaver.
Move 7B.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
All right.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Under Action Items, at 8A, a city manager regarding resolution urging the U.S. Department of Defense to add the names of the 74 sailors from the USS Frankie Evans, DD 754, to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. Add A1 as a resolution of support.
Well...
Yes, Ms. Friedman?
I was contacted by Randy Slaughter, one of our community members, about this issue. It has to do with a Glendale resident who died in the Vietnam War, but whose name, along with some of his colleagues, was left off of the Vietnam War Memorial in Washington, D.C., really for political reasons. And there is a movement afoot. His family and the family of some of the other soldiers are trying to get those soldiers who died in the war to be properly recognized on our memorial in Washington. They have support of, I think, now the state legislature, I believe, Washington, D.C. as well. But given that this is one of our own, I thought it only fitting that the city of Glendale also pass a resolution urging the powers that be in the federal government to include these soldiers on the memorial as they should have been included from the very beginning. In fact, the families only found out by accident, by visiting the memorial and not seeing their family members listed, which is a terrible way to find out that you were slighted, basically. So we want to correct this wrong. I know some of the family members are here, and I would invite them to come up and tell the story of what happened and why these people were not listed and what you're doing about it.
And we have two speakers. We have Fred Kerr, whom I believe is a brother of one of the victims, and Tim Wendler. So you're welcome, please, some comments.
Mayor and members of the council, my name's Tim Wendler, and my father was one of the 74 men lost in this accident. I'm also honored to be here with Fred Kerr, whose brother, James Kerr, was one of the 74 men who were lost in the accident. And they were on the ship, the USS Frankie Evans, which had served honorably in the Vietnam War and previous wars, and had received commendations. And a few days before June 3, 1969, it was ordered to participate in something called Operation Seaspir, which was a training exercise with other countries. But it was really also part of the war effort, if you think about it. It was an effort to show our enemies in Vietnam that we were united and we, you know, had strength within the seas. And fortunately, on the night of June 3, 1969, tragedy struck, and the HMAS Melbourne, an aircraft carrier in the Australian Navy, collided with the USS Frankie Evans, and the Evans was cut in half. And within three minutes, half the ship had sunk, and 74 men were lost. And so we're just, as Councilmember Friedman alluded to, we're looking for consideration to be, these 74 men to be added to the Vietnam Veterans Wall. They're excluded because they were outside of the official combat zone, and they weren't in combat at that time. But there have been other exceptions made for similar incidents, and we're just looking for the same kind of consideration, and we would really appreciate your support tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wendler. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you. My name's Fred Kerr, and I want to thank Councilman Friedman and the rest of the council for inviting us here and for taking up this cause. Forty-five years ago this morning, I was in Ed Siminski's history class at Hoover High School. I'm a tornado. And I married a tornado, and I heard the door open. I looked back, and Gene Haas was the boys' vice principal, and he signaled to me. And we had heard about the accident the night before, but I went to school. And my brother, Jim Kerr, was killed on the USS Frankie Evans with Tim's father. Tim was two years old. I was 17 years old. We grew up, my first part of my life was on Lexington Drive. My brother delivered the Glendale news press on California. I delivered it on Lexington. We went to Columbus School. We moved on over to Kenneth Road, where we went to Toll and Hoover High School. We played baseball at Shoal, Pacific, Verdugo, Pelican, Coney. My brother was quite a baseball player and played winter ball in '68 with scouts from St. Louis Cardinals and Rod Dato from USC watching him. He worked at Webb's Department Store. I worked at Tels Richfield. We went to all the civic dances, all the Y-Hops. We built cars. We gave our parents fits. My father taught school in Burbank for 33 years at John Muir Junior High. My mother, Fern Kerr, is 95 years old. She lives in assisted living in San Luis Obispo. She's very thankful for what you're doing here today. There were five of us growing up. It's now just my mother and I. My sister, father, and brother, Jim, are gone. You can see the article from the day after, June 4, and that was a letter he wrote home. We got letters in those days, seven to 10 days after he died, and that was a drawing he made. And he and Tim's father were in the forward section. They were cut right between the stacks, and the rest is history. I would say that the war was a big deal back then. Tim doesn't remember it, but I do. Every night, the body counts were rolling by the screen and Cronkite, and those guys were talking about it. My brother, graduated from Hoover, toured the United States and wasn't sure what he was going to do. He worked for Bill King, King Dental Labs in Burbank. And when he got a draft notice on his birthday in October of '68, it was a low number, it was a number, and he, the dental lab boys were Navy guys, and they said, "Join the Navy. The food's good, and you'll be safe." And we know, in this case, that wasn't true. I took him to the depot. He came home May 1. He was at Hoover High School, visiting friends, et cetera. He was on the ship 17 days when he died. Not to belabor this, but Glendale was a safe place for us. We'd go to Jessup's Garry and ride our bikes through the cattle. We did the Little League thing, the dances, everything, and it was just a great place to grow up, great schools. I went on for a bachelor's at Cal Poly and graduate degree. My brother never got to do that. Pardon me. I have two sons. I married a tornado, Judy Landall. I have five grandkids. My brother and Tim's father had lost two lives. They lost the life that day and the life that I've had they never got to live. And so I just want to thank you for joining forces with Sacramento and the House of Representatives, and now we're waiting for the Senate to act so this can happen. With that, I thank you, Randy Slaughter. Harry Hall played on the same Little League team as my brother and I, and it was all good. And there's a brochure here I'll pass around, and I just thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
Well, I've been aware of this issue for a long time. I just find it ridiculous that the Department of Defense chose not to honor these men. Naval ships went in and out of combat on a regular basis, as did C-130s and every other military deployment. We had naval gunfire from cruisers off of the DMZ that fired on a regular basis. Then they would go on to Subic Bay, they would go on to Japan, et cetera. So this is just ridiculous. And so I hope, finally, finally, the Congress, and I think the current Secretary of Defense is kind of predisposed to do the right thing, at least that's what I've heard. But it's a long time in coming. When I think about issues pertaining to the Vietnam War, I think about two young kids about your brother's age. I always think, their names are on the wall. They were in my platoon. I always think, what would they do? What would they say? And I'm sure they'd be happy to welcome your brother and these other sailors on that wall.
Mr. Quintero? Mr. Weaver?
No, I can't add much. I'm a veteran, Navy veteran, Seabees. But in the days of the draft, I was drafted in 1960, when I joined the Naval Reserve so I could finish school at USC. You know, in those days, you could fill out a sheet, a dream sheet, where you liked to go anywhere. First choice was Southern California to work on a master's. My second choice was someplace way out in the Pacific called Hawaii. I end up in staff duty in Hawaii for two years. Hey, I did what I was told to do. I went there saluted, and I had an intelligence for the Admiral of the Pacific and the Seabees. I didn't get combat. I was one of the lucky ones. But I still feel the compassion that affects you, that affects all veterans. And just because you're outside the limits of the combat zone, I mean, that is ridiculous. So I don't think there'd be any trouble getting the President to authorize this. Thank you for bringing it to our attention here.
Yes.
So, I'm not aware. Do we have these gentlemen's names on our monuments? Glendale and...
Everyone that, everyone that served, we made an extensive exhaustive search when the wall first went up, and we pretty much, a couple of people were not captured that we caught later on through... And then, of course, the most famous case is a Japanese-American who served during the Second World War, who had, went by the nickname Spuds, since he liked potatoes. He'd grown up in Glendale. And we actually received a Medal of Honor. We actually, his name was added later because he was in the camps when he went into the military. So unfortunately, not coming out of Glendale, we didn't pick up on it. But anyway, we've pretty much gotten everybody.
Ms. Friedman?
I just hope that our passing the resolution helps in some small way. If it can add anything to that, those voices, then I'll feel very, very good about what we did today. Now, do you need a motion?
I... So, yeah, you know, I was just talking about Memorial Day and what a way to bring the point home, right? Shame on us collectively for having tolerated this situation of these men and women not being, somehow not being honored in a way that they deserved and, because it's, whether we like it or not, whether we agree with a particular war or not, the fact is that our elected officials, on our behalf, put these men and women in harm's way. So we are responsible for it. That's at the end of the day. So it's really late, but at least, you know, like Ms. Friedman said, hopefully it's some kind of consolation and brings some kind of peace to family members, and it's the right thing to do. So...
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Uh-huh.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next item.
A.D. Director of Public Works regarding appeal of denial of the requested preferential parking restrictions of a 24 hours a day, seven days a week, except by permit only, on the 300 block of West Lexington Drive between Columbus Avenue and Central Avenue. He wants a motion denying the application without a public hearing and the decision of the Transportation and Parking Commission is hereby final. Two is a motion remanding to the Transportation and Parking Commission for rehearing. Three is a motion setting a public hearing before the city council.
Mr. Golanyan? Your first hearing as director?
Not yet.
Yet?
July 1st.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the item before you is an appeal of the denial of the preferential parking restriction of the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week exception by permit only on the 300 block of West Lexington Drive between Columbus Avenue and Central Avenue. Last year, we received a petition with 84% of the residents on that block in agreement to change the current restrictions. We placed this petition on hold because at the time, the Central Avenue project was in process and we didn't want to skew the analysis by counting the vehicles that the construction workers were parking on that street. Then in January, after the completion of the project, actually in February, we performed our vehicle counts and conducted residency verifications through the police department. At the worst-case scenario, between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, there was 84% occupancy on that block of Lexington Avenue, which means there was still 16% availability for parking. Nevertheless, we brought this item to Transportation and Parking Commission on March 24th for the consideration. The TPC approved to change the existing parking restriction of two-hour, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, to a two-hour, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM restriction after hearing from the residents and the business owner. Then, on April 3rd, 2014, we received an appeal notice from a resident on that block. If I may, I'd just like to highlight some of the decision that the TPC has made and what the consequences is. This should change parking habits and allow additional parking for residents without negatively affecting local businesses. Once these regulations and parking habits have changed, we will evaluate and bring it back to the TPC for further consideration if necessary. And actually, the TPC's decision should allow us, the staff, to work together with residents, businesses, to directly create additional parking solutions on that block. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Okay, no questions. We have a number of speakers that I'm going to invite up, one after the other. I would, two minutes. And in the interest of, yes?
So, the issue before us is whether or not to schedule an appeal hearing?
That's correct. Mr. Najarian?
Is it, is it germane to talk about the details of the parking restrictions at this point or?
It's certainly germane to ask the question so you can determine on your own whether or not it's appropriate to grant the hearing.
Thank you.
So, I'm going, yes, Mr. Quintero?
Just to be clear, so what is in place now? What do the residents have in place in terms of protection?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Quintero. Currently, there's a two-hour from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Saturday restriction with a permit.
But what did the commission vote for?
The commission's decision and approval was two hours, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday to Saturday.
So, that's what they would have?
Yeah, we have put that on hold pending this hearing. But that's what they would have.
But not, not a preferential parking, say, 6 to 10 or 6 to 12?
It's, it would be a preferential parking, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM currently.
Posted, 6:00 AM to?
10:00 PM.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Well, two-hour parking for the general public and preferential parking for the residents?
Correct.
Okay, with no further questions, I'd like to invite Remah Hagopian, followed by Andrew Medina. Please limit your comments to two minutes. And if you're, if you're going to be repetitive, just, you know, just say you oppose it or you don't oppose it, you're for it, in the interest of preserving time. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Remah Hagopian? Do you need the address too?
No, just name.
Mayor Sinanian and council members, thank you for your time and consideration today. As you know, we've been battling a parking situation on Lexington Drive for over a year. Really, the problem has been existing for much longer. But just the process with the city of Glendale has taken us and dragged for over a year. We've asked for 24/7 permitted parking and the TPC came back with a decision for slightly-modified restricted parking. Without a doubt, the modification that they proposed would not relieve the parking issues because it would still allow vehicles to be parked at the times we residents are having problems. In fact, in one way, it would create a new problem by enforcing parking too early in the morning, like 6:00 AM. So, we filed an appeal with the Public Works Department to dispute the decision of the TPC. If you look at the appeal, you will see that the, you will see that it provides very detailed information as to why the TPC decision will be ineffective. It also says as to what will be effective. And all without going to the extreme of 24/7 permitted parking. It's business-friendly and resident-friendly. And it's something that would, would really actually work. Therefore, we are asking you to make the right decision by not upholding the TPC's decision from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which really doesn't resolve anything, allows us to have, allow us to have the hearing with the city council to consider the appeal. And let's implement the parking restrictions proposed in the appeal so that everyone can be happy and we can have this matter to rest. To put it simply, if the TPC decision is upheld, we would have no choice but to start this process all over again. TPC decision will do nothing for the residents.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hagopian?
Questions?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you. Andrew Medina, followed by Xiomara Ferretti. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Andrew Medina, resident of 300 West Lexington. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. The proposal for the 6:00 PM or 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM doesn't affect actually the business hours which this business is occurring. Most of his business is from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. That's the bulk of his business. That's when all the traffic comes in. That's when the parking is taken up. Sundays are a problem. Holidays aren't even mentioned. We can't expect to park anywhere within our block, family members, guests. There's nowhere to park. I work for MTA. My hours aren't nine-to-five. My hours shift. I can get off at 11:00 PM, come home after a 45-minute drive, not find a place to park. I'm parking a block down, a block over by Columbus Elementary School. That's more than a football field away. Do not uphold TPC's decision. Let us have our appeal. And help us with our own health and welfare because of the music, the anger of the parking area. All this basically is just one big combination. And yes, it has been going on. A lot of the statements she's made, yes, I concur. So, I'll just cut that short.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Xiomara Ferretti, followed by George Patros.
Hello, my name is Xiomara Ferretti, mayor, council members. I've lived at Lexington for 10 years. And as a student and worker, I come home late. And earlier this year, my father was diagnosed with cancer. So, all these trials that he has to go to, we get home late. We have to look for parking 45 minutes, search around the block, park down the street on Murdo, I believe, or down the same street as the elementary. I come home from school, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I have to search 45 minutes for parking. I don't get to see my parents. They're usually asleep. And I never see my parents. And by the time I get home, they're asleep. So, what I'm asking you is, if you guys cannot meet us at what we request, meet us halfway. If you can't give us a 24-hour permit, give us, to us in the evening during the weekdays, while majority of us are at work or school. During the weekends, give it, you know, give us the 24-hour permit. I mean, it's going to be, I don't know how hard it will be, but it will, I believe, fix the solution, fix the problem. I've encountered situations where the staff of the restaurant has cone parking. I've, you know, moved the cone friendly. I've been confronted. And I am not bluffing. You can call the police reports. There's been police called on that street for disturbances when they could be elsewhere. So, I'm asking you, please, think about it. It's a win-win situation. If there's violators, you can get, you know, they can get cited. The city makes money. If we have to pay for a permit, we're willing to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferretti. George Patros, followed by Luis Alsig. Sorry if I ruined that name. State your name for the record, please.
My name is George Patros. I live in 339 West Lexington. My problem is, I have two sons. I call in, come visit me anytime. Tell me sorry about that because I can't park in my car. Anytime the street is full, nobody can visit me. If you live in Lexington, you can live alone. Nobody come see you, visit you. It's big problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patros. Luis Alsig, followed by Rene Soriano. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Luis Alsig. I live in 332 West Lexington Drive. Before we start the meeting, we swear to say the truth. And when somebody swear to say the truth, you have to do the right way or to fix the problem with the right way.
Can we have silence in the audience, please? Shh. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. And the people that live in Lexington Drive, we have a bigger problem. I mean, for us, it's been a bigger problem. Lot of stress we get. I mean, there is a problem. Maybe for somebody else, there is no problem. Doesn't mean to them nothing. But for us, lot of problem. I mean, on top of that, when we came after the work, we worked after six, seven hours or eight hours, we tried to come home. And either when we driving, we're going to go home, we're going to relax, we're going to sit, take a shower, eat, whatever. Instead of when we came to Lexington, we saw traffic more than a freeway I have, I driving, I driving in a freeway. And some people, what they do, and they do that purpose, the customer belong to restaurant, they took two spot. It's one car, they took two spot. And there's more than four or five people, they do that. And many times, we talked to them. I mean, I don't want to say bad word, but they don't care. They give us finger or whatever. So, they walk, they don't give a damn. So, we pay rent, we pay tax, and we try to enjoy with our life with this, the place I live or the people in Lexington they live. And we get stressed for nothing, for no reason, for nothing. And I don't know, you have to, guys, they have to find some, some, I mean, we have to find some way to fix this problem. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alsig. Rene Soriano, I think, I'm sorry, followed by Sonia Soriano. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Rene Soriano and I'm here with my sister Sonia. I live on 316 West Lexington Drive and we're actually the, the house that's clearly the very first house that was impacted by all this, this problem, you know? We live in, in this purple-colored house on the block of Lexington Drive. And we're just here to ask you guys to not uphold the, the TPC's proposal, mainly because I think, you know, the proposal is, they were proposing a preferential parking at the time when all of us are actually out to work, you know? And the problem actually, although, we are experiencing most of the problem at the time when we get home from work. I actually work for the, I'm doing educational finance and basically, I get home like around 7 o'clock at night. And that's when, the time when we have all this, this, this problem. And we have lived in that street for about 21 years now, since 1993. And I think the problem has just gotten to be a little bit more, it has become a little bit more problematic now. So, I do know that in a scope of things, this is really not a big thing. But for us, who have been a resident of that area, I think we've been clearly impacted by all these things. And also, there are some related issues that I really do not, do not want to discuss. But, you know, being the house that's very close to that, that place that's causing most of the problems, I think, you know, like the noise, the smoke, those kind of stuff. But I think that one is not within this scope of the, the item. So, but basically, for now, what we were just, would want to ask the board is to not uphold that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soriano.
Thank you.
Ms. Sonia Soriano, you have two minutes. You're entitled to two minutes.
Yeah, it's okay. What I'm saying, my name is Sonia Soriano. I live the very, I live in the house that is very close to the restaurant. What I'm really concerned about, aside from the parking, is I have like three kids. All of them are honor student here in Glendale Unified School. Every single time, they need to do their assignment, I need to close my house every time. I need to close the window because the noise is so loud. And all the time that they have, like, you know, exam, I need to take them out from the house. And I go to my other house that is, I go to my other brother's house that is not here in Glendale. And most of the time, they always cry to me. They said, "Mommy, why do you guys buy this house?" And I told them, like, you know, if this is going to be happen, like, you know, I won't buying this house. But during that time that we bought the house, I don't have any kids yet. And that's really, really, like, you know, affecting me, affecting my kids. I actually, I'm a nurse. I work sometimes like six, six days a week. And every time that they have a party on that particular restaurant, I don't go to bed until like 2 o'clock in the morning. And same thing with my kids. They don't go to bed until like 2 o'clock in the morning because the noise is so much. Every time I call the police officer, I don't know, nothing happened. I'm...
They do, they do come in some...
Okay, well, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. A.D. Torosian, followed by Vigen Hagopian. State your name for the record, please.
R.A.D. Torosian. Dear mayor and council members, I am here to support the preferential parking restrictions on the 300 block of West Lexington Drive. I am here along with many other individuals to urge reconsideration of the ordinance due to the strain on residents who are forced to park their cars around the block and instruct their guests to do the same. This issue has become a problem, not only because there's a lack of parking for the residents, but also because the patrons of nearby restaurant, in an attempt to duck valet fees increasingly in the past year, parked their cars for hours on residential, residential street adjacent to the establishment, often blocking the ramps and restricting the entrance to our own parking structures. So, this is a nuisance, not because, not only because they parked their cars there for hours on end, and this is not enforced for, usually, the time limit is two hours, but no one, no one follows this. And this is, this is rarely enforced. I've seen cars there for like five hours, six hours, and they just stay there. But also because this is a nuisance, these are not residents. These are customers of the establishment. And they come and they block our entrances to our, to our parking structures, to our garages. And I understand, I understand this is not a noise ordinance. Some residents complained about the noise and this is, this is a huge problem as well, but this is, this is not about that. And I would like to say that the noise, noise is off the charts. It's pretty problematic. The cops are cold every...
That's not in front of us today, so...
I know. So, I understand that. But I'm, I'm just saying, the reason so many people are here is because we're just really tired of this.
Thank you, Mr. Torosian. Thank you. Vigen Hagopian, followed by Sarine Ayvazi.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Vigen Hagopian. I live in 328 West Lexington, apartment number three. I live in there... I live in there for 38 years, and we don't have this parking problem for last five years. It's been, it's been five years we have this problem, parking issue. And we appealed it about month ago, and suddenly, four days ago, last Thursday, city brought a sign, put 30-minute parking sign on front of the restaurant. I'd like to know if the case is an appeal, it's an appeal case, why we have to have this sign in front of the restaurant? It says 30-minute parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hagopian. Sarine Ayvazi, followed by Nushik Kalantarian.
Hello.
Please state your name for the record.
I'm Sarine Ayvazi. I'm a resident at 300 West Block of Lexington. Thank you so much for having us tonight and for hearing us out. I'm gonna make this very short. The reason we're asking for rehearing for our appeal is because the TPC's recommendation will not suffice what our needs are. So they've chosen to extend the hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., where currently it's from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And that doesn't cover much because the parking enforcement only works until 7 o'clock, which leaves the residents to have to police the area, monitor the area. So anyone can park there from 5 o'clock and be there for the rest of the night. So even though at some point, as residents, we do need to monitor, we just think that by extending the hours that we requested in the appeal, which is from 3:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., permitted only and not two hours with preferential permit, to avoid this issue, so that the residents don't have to spend their time coming home, then having to watch to see if a car has been parked there for two hours or not, or having to monitor ourselves. So it's just basically wanting you to hear our case and rehear our case, to really let you know that it's only gonna be an hour difference from what they're offering us, and even then, we have to spend the time to monitor ourselves, to make sure to call the police if they've been parked for longer than two hours. So we really appreciate your consideration. Just ask for a hearing to give more details, because I know this isn't the time to do so. In addition to that, we've been fighting for this for over a year, and as one of the neighbors mentioned, and within the last week or so, last week, Thursday, there was a sign posted on our street, 300 West Block of Lexington, for 30-minute parking, and there was no case that this was put in place prior or whatnot. So we just wanna, wanted to be fair, we wanna be heard, so we just really appreciate you taking this into consideration and allowing us to bring our case forward again in front of council. Thank you.
Hold on for one second. You said that what you're asking for is only one hour different from what's being offered by the commission?
They're only, whatever their hour is only one.
6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And I just wanna make sure I understood you correctly.
So what they're offering us is from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which we didn't ask for the morning hours, but in the afternoon, at nighttime, where there's the most problematic, it's only extending it for an hour. So basically, we wanted, we said the issue starts from 5:00 p.m., so if they're giving it until 10:00 p.m., there's no monitoring. Monitoring is, stops at 7:00 p.m. for the enforcement, yeah? So there's just, basically giving us a one-hour gap from what we initially asked for.
Okay. Thank you. And last speaker is Nushik Kalantarian. Please state your name for the record.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, when that happens, what's the process?
She will just be able to speak in Armenian for the duration of two minutes. We'll provide you with the translation tomorrow or the day following. I'm sorry, I thought some, one of your, someone had already explained to you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no more cards. Anyone like to weigh in on this issue? Yes, Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, I'd like to see alternative three. I'd like to see the case presented to the city council. I think we've heard from enough residents, including long-term residents on that street, that something needs to be done, and I don't think the TPC's decision was the right one. I personally think the best bet would be during the day that there be a two-hour parking only, but in the evening, starting at 5:00 p.m., from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., that there be permit parking only for the residents. I think that's the only way they're going to get some peace. And someone made a very good point, that on the weekends, probably, you know, during the day on the weekend, it might be an idea to maybe do it from 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., since obviously, it's a lot busier during the weekend. But at any rate, I don't see any way for them to get any peace, those that invested in buying property there, and the people that live in apartments, they're not gonna get any rest unless there's preferential permit parking for the residents in the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian?
Well, I'm not in favor of that. What I understand is that this came before the TPC, as our charter calls for, and is their jurisdiction. They held a full, complete, and inclusive hearing, where many residents came to speak, staff made the presentation. They gave everyone the opportunity to be heard. They followed, they came with a decision which mirrored staff's recommendations. Staff's comments, Mr. Belanian's comments today, is in the worst case, there's 16% of the street still open, and that the restrictions that the TPC asked to be put in place haven't even yet been put in place. So we have no idea whether those restrictions work or not. I think at the very least, we owe it to have those restrictions in place to see how it works. If at some point in the future, we realize that those are not sufficient, then clearly the residents are permitted and entitled to come back again. As a corollary, I wanna know, and I listened to some of that hearing, I heard one resident say he's got five cars that he puts on the street. I also asked to find out how many of the off-street parking spots the landlords are taking for their own use and not letting them be available to the tenants who are otherwise entitled to use those spots, whether renting it out to others, or closing it off completely, or using it for renting it as storage. So these are the things we need to know. But I think at the very least, if we have any respect for our commissions, that we should allow these restrictions, which staff supported, to go into effect and see how it works for the neighborhood.
Ms. Friedman?
I'm okay with hearing the appeal. I don't know how I would rule. I mean, I, it would be nice if this could go into effect before we hear the appeal. I don't know how quickly they can put it into effect, and I don't know how quickly this appeal could come to us, but it would be great for the neighbors to see how those restrictions work before they come in. And, you know, when and if we do hear it, I would hope that it would be limited to what we're hearing about, which is parking, not about noise. I understand that you're here and you wanna vent. That's human nature, I get it, but that's a different discussion, I think, for a different day.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. And Mr. Weaver?
Well, I feel like I have inadequate information to go one way or the other. Let me say a few things in general. It's not specific to any one person. But the homes that were built there were probably built in the '30s and '40s. And in those days, mostly, they were one-car garages set at the rear of the residence. And I'd be curious to know how many of the residents are parking in those garages rather than using them for storage? How many are parking in the driveways leading to the back rather than out on the street? These things to be on the street. I don't know that. If I'd had time one night, I wanna drive down there at night and see, okay, any people's parking in the driveways. Don't know. But the standards in those days, zoning, whatever, didn't require more than one. Most families had one, maybe a few had two cars. Nowadays, husband and wife, most of them work, and if you have a teenage kid, they have a car too. So automatically, you've got a different situation. And now, as apartments come in, the old standards on apartments didn't require adequate off-street parking for apartments. So we have a problem that we trying to deal with. These homes are sitting on the west side of Colorado, which is the borderline of the downtown area. So virtually every street that is perpendicular to Central, all are gonna have the same problem. Because you have businesses that are sitting on Central, like Phoenicia, and their people are gonna move down the street. If we put standards in and eliminate everything except to the residents, then we're pushing the problem further down into the next block or into another block. Phoenicia, I talked to the owner, he has two lots that he's rented to park. He also has employees park in another location. No, wait, wait, it's my turn to talk. I told you I didn't know if I had enough evidence or not, but that's what I'm told. Now, I go there occasionally, but I get there at 5, 6:00 in the evening, and I'm gone. Personally, I don't care to valet park. I don't know how many of the people coming there don't care to. How many of them are actually on the street? How do I monitor that and determine that? I don't know. Not here tonight. Do I have to go to a hearing to find out? Or do I take the TPC's recommendation, which mirrors the staff's recommendation, try it out, see what happens? I totally empathize with people that are coming home at 7, 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night to their residence, and they can't park because somebody is there. The only thing that has changed, as far as I know, in the last year or so, has been Phoenicia's expansion. And all of a sudden, it's happening. What was happening before the expansion? According to the letter I got, it's been a number of years. So I guess the trigger for this action was when Phoenicia started expanding their restaurant, and all of a sudden, there's a problem that wasn't there before. How do I prove that? How do I know that for a fact? When the police are not down there monitoring the street, what do you do to handle it? I don't know the answer. I'm not opposed to a public hearing, but myself, with my training and stuff, I would say, okay, you try the cities, monitor 30, 60 days. If you can't see the difference in that time, if the same problem exists, then we go to a public hearing. Now, we're gonna need a lot more evidence. I mean, I'm gonna wanna be down there, or staff down there. How many, how many people are parking in their garages? How many people are parking in their driveways to their garages? Are everybody parking out in the street? They are public streets, not private. They belong to anybody that wants to park there. And when we start to restrict it just to the residents, which can make a lot of sense, we're taking it away from the other public that wishes to. Now, where do you get the balance? Frankly, I don't know. We don't have the police to monitor. We don't have enough police in this city as it is. So how are they gonna monitor what's going on down there? I don't know. So I could go either way, and pose for 60, try it. We would know, we would know. You bring it back, I absolutely do a public hearing. But if the majority here today want a public hearing, I have no problem. But I'm gonna need a lot more evidence. I thought we were putting some good people on the TPC, that engineers and stuff. I know the head there, who's a traffic engineer for the city of Los Angeles. And they usually come up with pretty good analysis. So bottom line is, I could go either way. I don't know what the solution is, because you're gonna have it all up and down Central, and then you go over to Maryland on the east side, and up and down Maryland. I've been on Maryland during the day. I can't find a place to park on Maryland. Who's parking there? Well, it's probably the workers that don't care to pay to park in the garages. So they go out and park in the street during the day. How do we solve these problems? I don't know. And I don't think staff or anybody else knows. But.
No, 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 let's keep this under control.
I see you shaking your head back and forth and back and forth. That's fine. I'm giving my opinion. I don't know that I'm right. I'm trying to be honest with you what I think. I can go either way. The Quinteros. Well, I know I'm right, so listen to me.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
Mr. Quinteros' analysis could be the right thing. And we gotta get, from what I'm hearing, you're not talking about the morning, you're not talking about 10, 12 o'clock in the morning, you're not talking the afternoon, and the palm apparently starts in the evening hours. So, Quinteros' plan, maybe to put it on into the evening, up to midnight or something, takes care of it. I don't even know how late the restaurants open. Noise, that's another issue. I don't know anything about it. That's not here tonight. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go either way, depending on what you.
So I'll express myself, Mr. Quintero, something. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
A few more things. Well, look, we set it in motion when we agreed to expand the, and I voted for the expansion of the restaurant. I love that restaurant, I go there quite often. Sometimes I valet park, other times I don't. When I don't valet park, I normally park on Central, because in the evening, Central is pretty empty. So to me, that's the quickest way to get into the restaurant and out. The reason I hesitate in waiting is that they've been at it for a while. It's not like they just started last month or last week. They've been going through the process for quite a while. They didn't get the answer that they thought was satisfactory. We're the elected officials. I think it's up to us to make the decision. But overall, we're setting in motion a lot of development in this city, including Central, not only brand, but also apartment buildings on Central. So we might as well begin to face the reality that there's gonna be a spillover effect on these residential streets and deal with it. We've done it in the past with the Brand Boulevard of Cars, we've done it on Glen Oaks, we've done it up at Glendale College. So let's start bringing some relief to the residents of this street, and we can come up with some happy medium. And I'm happy to hear that the restaurant is gonna lease some more space for its valet parking. Between that and the right program on Lexington, I think, you know, we may be able to solve the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. And I have a lot of questions too. And. Thank you, Mr. Quintero. And I have a lot of questions, too, and as my colleagues do. And I think that's exactly the reason why this issue warrants a public hearing. So I support having a public hearing. I think it's not an issue of doubting the competency of our commissioners on the Transportation Commission. It's just that, you know, the buck stops with us, and I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Quintero, that the moment we agreed to the expansion, we take ownership of this issue. We take responsibility for the consequences. So let's have the hearing. Let's hear all the facts, so we can ask all the questions and hear all the answers, and then make an educated decision. So can we have a motion?
Yeah, I will move alternative three.
Second.
Just so we're clear, it's a de novo hearing. So it's not, if council decides based on the evidence that we want to put it back to no restrictions or the original restrictions, that's fair game also.
Yes, sir.
So just so everyone knows, that it's not a guarantee that it's going to fall back to the, the worst-case scenario is not to fall back to the 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. It could very well be no permit parking.
Okay. So we have a second?
Yeah. And I'd also like to comment on what Mr. Najarian says, because he makes a good point. I don't know if it's happening on Lexington, but there are many instances in this city where property owners are not renting the spaces to the tenants. And I believe that violates our code, right? Does it?
No, it doesn't.
It does. Okay. So even worse. So there is no code. You can rent an apartment unit at whatever value you want and, say, park on the street if the tenant's willing to do it. So I think it would be of interest to us to have some idea of apartment buildings on, on Lexington and what's being done in terms of the parking spaces.
We just need more evidence.
Why can't we make that a code? I mean, if we're requiring apartment buildings to put in parking, it's for a reason.
So, I mean, if that's something the council wants to have us look at, we can do, with the staff, obviously.
I think any of my colleagues, would they second looking at this?
That's a matter for another day.
Absolutely.
I know, but we can still ask staff.
I think they're obviously practical problems, but legally, we can look at whether that's permissible.
We're going to hear the practical.
But let's take roll call on this issue, since it's been seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers. Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
I guess I'll go with it, because the majority want it.
Say yes.
Mr. Galanian, you've got your first task now, that you're going to do Public Works Director. A lot more information's going to be needed. Yes?
Harrison Anian?
Yes. Thank you.
Stand by. It'll be a few months. Got a lot of data to collect.
Okay. Next item?
Next item. ATC's Director of Public Works regarding North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. C1's Resolution Initiating Fiscal Year 2014-15 Levy of Annual Assessment and Ordering the Preparation of the Engineers Report. C2 is Resolution Preliminary Approving, Prelimarily Approving the Engineers Report for Fiscal Year 2014-15 Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments. Three is a Resolution Declaring City Council's Intention to Levy and Collect the Annual Assessment for Fiscal Year 2014-15 and Set the Time and Place for a Public Hearing on Objections.
Yes, Mr. Choa.
This is the annual step. Our current Public Works Director, Mr. Zern, will give you a very, very brief overview, as this is something we do every year.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is our annual maintenance district renewal for the San Fernando Road Corridor. We have the area divided into five zones, and essentially this takes care of landscape, landscape maintenance, hardscape maintenance, irrigation maintenance, tree maintenance. Each of the zones is divided up differently depending on the complexity of that zone with regards to the amount of infrastructure they have. And we are setting the fee this year to, at the same level as, as it currently is, $77,000 and some change. And we're asking you tonight to initiate the process, to preliminarily accept the Engineers' Report, and set the public hearing, which would be June 17th.
I'll move ATC, one, two, and three.
Second?
Councilmembers. Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Harrison Anian?
Yes.
Next item. ATD's Director of Administrative Services Finance Regarding Adoption of City's 2014-15 GAN Appropriation Limit. E1 is Resolution Approving 2014-15 GAN Appropriations Limit of $227,141,473.
This is one more step in the annual dance when it comes to budget time. The establishment of the GAN limit is the maximum ceiling that a city can appropriate. To my knowledge, I don't think this city, like most of these, has ever come close. If you have any specific questions about the history of the GAN limit or what our limit is, you certainly can avail yourself of Mr. Elliott here, sir.
Yeah. Explanation of GAN.
GAN limit initiated back in 1979 by Proposition Number Four. It basically sets a cap on the appropriations a city can have backed by tax revenues. So we go through a calculation based off population growth and go through the population growth relative in the city to the county, and then come up with a ratio and then apply it to the last, last year's cap. This year, as, as the city clerk said, our cap is $227 million. Our appropriations subject to that cap are $156 million, so we have about a $71 million margin. So we have quite a bit of room. And as the city manager said, I have not heard of any city that has gone over it.
And this isn't resources that you have, but if you had the resources, you couldn't spend more than this cap?
Correct. So it's just an annual process that we go to calculate it and present it to you for official approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move ATD, one.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers. Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Harrison Anian?
Yes. Next item?
ATD's Director of Administrative Services Finance Regarding Annual GWP Transfer to the General Fund. E1 is a Resolution Reducing the Percentage of Operating Revenue from GWP Electric Works to 12.2%, $20,607,000 to be transferred from GWP to the General Reserve Fund for 2013-14.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any cards on this?
There are no cards on this issue.
My colleagues are willing. I'll move ATC, E1.
Before we take roll call, I do want to ask. So this year, we're transferring $20,607,000 from GWP?
Yes, sir.
To the General Fund?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
And this transfer constitutes a 12.2% decrease over the amount transferred last year? Is that correct?
It relates to 12.2% of operating revenues pursuant to our charter. It is a reduction in our step down annually of $250,000 that the council has previously established. We're continuing to make good on that step down of the transfer. And we no longer transfer water revenues.
Okay. Well, as a matter of principle, the, I've, in the past, opposed these transfers, and I still do, but you know what? I'm, again, I think I use the expression, this is what it is, there's a gun to my head. So if we don't transfer this amount, what happens to the General Fund?
You would lose one of the largest, the fourth-largest revenue source of the General Fund. This has long been part of the revenue structure of the General Fund. So to the extent that this represents $20 million, your library, total library budget is a little over $8 million. Your total parks and community services budget, a little over $9 million. Conversely, your fire department is a little over $40 million. So we can mix and match different pieces, but what it ultimately represents, our police department, $60 million. 60, almost 67. What it means is that you would end up mixing and matching significant wholesale munitions and the level of service that you provide, up to and including contracting out or eliminating entire departments.
So the impact would be severe and possibly crippling on entire departments?
Certainly not an overstatement, sir. It would be crippling.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Quintero?
Well, and maybe this will be the last time I'll get to give my opinion as an elected official.
It will be. Definitely.
June 3rd. The way I view this issue, that was never an issue in the past. You know, I look at this city in the whole, and I say, thank God that the people that put this city together, that incorporated this city so long ago, decided, gee, you know what? We should own a water and power company, because we will be able to generate income from that water and power company. We'll be able to fund police and fire. And I assume they were always interested in starting a library system, and they did. And so cities in Southern California that had the foresight to do that, that aren't dependent on Southern California Edison, et cetera, they've done real well. So looking at this city in the whole, I find absolutely no problems with transferring this money. That's why it's there. Certainly throughout the years, our GWP has done an incredible amount of infrastructure, building everything, power plants, buying into power plants, upgrading our water system, including the huge reservoir at Chevy Chase and Campbell, near where I live. So all in all, I think the city's done a good job. Our Public Works and our water and power system has done a good job. And so this transfer, to me, this is what the intention was of the founders of this city. Hope that's the last time I have to say it.
Yeah, that was good.
And I'm not disagreeing with the, with the gist of what you said. I'm just not sure the charter is worded in the most clear and concise manner.
We tried to correct that.
I would absolutely agree with you on that one.
So two ways to proceed, I think, in the future, in the long term. One is to continue diminishing the transfer to the extent possible, and to the extent that's healthy, and to the extent that's, you know, to bring it down to the extent that that's allowable by the charter. And at the same time, look at another attempt to amend the charter to reflect, perhaps, the spirit of what the founding fathers, if I may call them so, intended by providing that specific clause in the charter. So with that, let's go to a vote. Roll call, please.
I have the motion. Who was the second?
Mr. Quintero.
Thank you. Councilmembers. Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Harrison Anian?
Yes. Next item?
ATD F's Director of Administrative Services Finance Regarding Adoption of Fiscal Year 2014-15 City of Glendale Budget and Citywide Fee Schedule. F1 is a Resolution Adopting a General Budget, Enterprise Budgets, and Other Mislandous Budgets for Fiscal Year 2014-15. Two is a Resolution Establishing Certain Fees and Increasing Certain Existing Fees for Various Services Provided by the City and Adopting Comprehensive Citywide Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 2014-15. Three is a Resolution Establishing Certain Fees and Increasing Certain Existing Fees for Public Works, Community Development, and Fire-related Services, Permits and Certificates. Four is a Resolution Establishing Classification Tells and Compensation for Employees of the City of Glendale GCA Confidential and Hourly Classifications. And five is a Resolution Establishing Classification Tells and Compensation for Employees of the City of Glendale GMA and GMA Employee Relations Exempt Classifications.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question?
Mr. Weaver.
I know we're going to have a discussion on at least one fee. How many of these can we motion get out of the way after your presentation, before we do the fee, or is it take the whole?
That's a good question. Can we bundle some of these together and vote on that, get that out of the way, and then have a discussion or not have a discussion about the fees?
We would be holding out in that case, sir. I believe, number two, a resolution establishing certain fees and increasing certain fees. I'm sorry, two and three, but you could do one, four, and five.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers. Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Harrison Anian?
Yes.
Can I make a comment about what we just voted on? Which is that part of our budget, if you've been watching, we've gone through a number of budget study sessions. There's a bit of an unknown when it comes to the money that the state basically owes us from the redevelopment agency, bonds that were sold. And we were owed a certain amount of money, and the Department of Finance has come back and said, oh, no, we've decided we're not going to give you that money. Well, I just want to say that we've been getting quite a bit of help from our representative in Sacramento, Assemblymember Mike Gatto, has really gone to bat for the city to get the Department of Finance to pay us what they owe us. And I just want to publicly acknowledge his work, because him pushing from that end is very, very important. And I'm glad that he's been our partner in this. So I want to thank you, Mr. Gatto, and let people know that he's really been our champion on this issue.
Not all the time. He's coming, I mean, to be fair, I think he needed some persuasion to see things our way and support our municipalities. I like where he's at now, but we had some scary moments earlier.
Okay. So on to item number, yes.
Okay. So before we get to item F2 and 3, one of the issues clearly that folks would like to discuss is the fee increase that we talked about just earlier for the Mills Act applications. I would like to withdraw my support at this time only for increasing that fee to the $10,000 figure. However, I would like to have at a later date a discussion of that fee before the council with additional information. And some that I mentioned last time was, over the last 20, or let's say 15 Mills Act applications which were approved, I'd like to know what the home value was. I'd like to know what the savings, tax savings per Mills Act contract was and is, because there was some question on that. I would also like to know if there's any information on the reinvestment into the home. Many of the letters said we're putting in a lot of money into the homes to preserve them. If there's any information on that, I'd like to have that. And coupled with that, I'd like to have the framework for a fee waiver program, where an applicant, due to certain financial reasons, may apply for a waiver of whatever fee may be out there. So I'd like to discuss. I know it'll take some time to, to develop, but I think we owe it to ourselves to have a more full and educated discussion on that. Maybe I'm wrong in my perceptions, and I stand open to be educated and get the information to make a proper decision on that fee.
Mr. Quintero?
Friedman?
Yeah. What about the historic district? Are you okay leaving it at zero?
I'm okay. What is it now?
I was trying to find it here.
So, thought on that.
It was going up to 3,000 or something?
It is part of, I don't know if the council, Mr. Mayor...
Couldn't find it in the latest agenda.
Go to Laura first.
It's currently zero, I thought, going to.
No, I don't think it's zero.
I'd be happy to back off. To the extent that I was supporting an increase, I'd be happy to come off of that at this point.
So you want to back off? You want to just move forward with the discussion now, or you still want?
Well, the only thing I'm saying is that the proposed increases to the Mills Act fees and the historic district fees, I'm willing to put back...
Wait. If I, if I may, we do have some information
Okay.
On, on all that. We, we worked with Community Development this week to give you some information.
There we go.
So if, if you want to, with your indulgence, I'll fast-forward through the presentation just to highlight.
Before you do, I wasn't around, because I don't support increasing the fees for historic districts or for individual homes, Mill Act.
Well, that's what we're here to...
If he's not, if he's not interested in pursuing that, do we need this presentation right now?
Well, not on the districts. If we agree on leaving it where, which is zero.
You know, I prefer to do that some later date, where I can get the information and go through it. And I don't know if the public has it as well. I'm sure they would like to have some input on it.
Ms. Friedman?
Well, just before I do that, I forgot to mention when I was talking about Mike Gatto, because I, you know, with all this, that Carol Lou has, of course, also been a great champion of ours. And I just want to be sure that she's acknowledged. Both of our representatives in Sacramento, Carol Lou and Mike Gatto, have really been helpful. And this has been a huge thing. This is millions and millions of dollars we're talking about. So I'm sorry I didn't mention Senator Lou. I just, I was kind of thinking about, you know, this other stuff. But I want to make sure that she's acknowledged, because she's always a great champion of ours, as is Mike Gatto, I believe. And Carol Lou has really also helped a lot with this, and it's, you know, millions of dollars to the city. So thank you very much to, to both of our state representatives. In terms of Mills Act, I don't know that we need this presentation. You know, when this came up last time, and I, you know, heard from some of my council members that they wanted to raise the fees, I said that, you know, I might support the staff recommendation of the $3,000, but that I really wanted to hear from the preservation community. And I just want to say that they answered. And I'm so glad that they did, because, you know, this is a very important issue to me and to a lot of people in our community. And I was glad to get their feedback and for our council to get their feedback, because it's very important that we have that dialogue. And we did have that dialogue. So if Mr. Najarian is okay with keeping the fees as they are now, I would really like to do that, because I just think it's, and if we want to bring it back later to further discuss it, that's fine with me. But I think for now, I, you know, when we adopt these fees, I would like to... But I think for now, I, you know, when we adopt these fees, I would like to keep them all as they are. And I don't mind hearing, not just about fees later, but about our Mills Act and about our historic, let's have an update. Let's talk about how we're doing with our districts, how, if we have any more on the horizon. I'd like to hear more about commercial properties, because we still really lag behind in landmarks of historic properties, and maybe we can have a bigger discussion about ways of incentivizing our commercial properties, because that's been an issue. We've got a lot of commercial properties out there that could be listed. They don't come forward. I know the Historic Society tries to reach out to them to say, "You could save a lot of money in property taxes," but they're looking down the road and saying, "Maybe I want to knock this building down." So, and we've seen that happen over the last few years. So, let's talk about ways of incentivizing those commercial property owners to list their own properties. And have we talked yet about our upcoming, have we announced what's happening with our survey?
We have not announced, but I think we did discuss them at the last year's budget and follow-up. I know that we have discussed it with our preservation interest community, so.
All right. So, let's stay on item 8F2 and 3.
Okay. So, at some point, we'll talk about that as well.
I'm not even sure item we're on at this point. 8F2 and 3.
Does anybody care about historic districting? They come so seldom. Everybody okay leaving it at zero?
Yeah, zero is what I'd like to see.
How much does it cost staff to do two process historic districting?
Once every five years?
It's not zero.
It's not zero. How much does it cost now?
I couldn't find it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, when we did the study, the actual full cost to recover our services provided is $10,539.
For the district?
The districts or the...
How much does the city do?
That's a Mills Act.
That's for the Mills Act.
How about the district?
How about the district?
Historic district application.
We just did Brockmont.
One that comes every three, four, or five years.
Mr. Mayor, while we're searching for that, I just want to make clear, currently, the resolution that's part of your packet on F3, which deals with the Mills Act applications, has in there the staff recommendation of 3,000. So, if the council wants to leave it at the current fee, then it'll, when it introduces that item, it'll have to modify it to put it back to the current fee.
That's in two or three?
Listen, it's music to my ears since...
I'd like to know what it is.
Also, Member Friedman's thanking everyone today. I'll thank the Historic Preservation Society also, because when I come next year asking for a Mills Act on my house, I'll have them to thank and know of you. So, it's great, bricks for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for thanking everybody else.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we found out in our fee schedule, it's actually 13,572.
Currently?
When we did the study, that was the actual cost to recover. The current fee we have is $2,083, and staff is recommending 6,500.
Okay. That's why I say, "Leaving it where it is."
If I may, then, sir, to the extent that we have a, the fee schedule, what we hear you all loud and clear is that you would, well, maybe not. Let me be very clear. Are you instructing us to keep fees as they are? The district was little over 2,000, the Mills Act was 1250, or are you recommending something beyond the current fee structure?
Leave it where it is. Mr. Najarian would like a study.
We can bring it back within a couple of months. I have no problem.
Leave it the way it is.
But it's being timed, yeah, it should be left to see. Okay. So, let's leave that out.
Easy enough, then. If I could turn your attention, then, to page 20 or slide 20, we'll cover just two slides for you by way of full disclosure. Want you to see some revisions from the public hearing on these two slides. And I'll let Bob walk through them real quick. And if you have questions, Armin is here, our revenue manager.
Let me flip through there. Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, part of what we've been doing since the hearing on May 20th, we've gone back and obviously combed through the fees yet a few more times. One of the items we had input from you on at the public hearing was splitting the development potential request and dividing it up into our zones and non-our zones. So, we have done that and come back with fees for those items, which we have broken out here. And the new fees are shown on this table.
I'm sorry, is that slide 20?
Slide 20 in your hand.
Slide 20, yes. I think that's hard to see up there.
Sorry for the interruption.
And then, looking to slide 21, there were a handful of fees within the Neighborhood Services section.
The items up here are basically corrections that we had listed, the altered and unaltered dogs, and by way of policy of encouraging altered animals, the fees were...
Yeah, 25.
Right. We want to keep the fees lower to encourage people to have their animals altered. So, that basically just...
Aided, neutered?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Politically correct way to say it.
Altered, yes. Altered states. So, yeah, it's just a correction. And then, finally, the amplified sound permit, we had a correction of $100 versus the initial fee was 402. So, these are just minor housekeeping items we wanted to bring to your attention. And then, we had the Mills Act item, but we've certainly got input on that, so.
We had a couple others, didn't we, at the last hearing? Well, one item that I think I'd request the information on was the false alarm fees.
Yes, sir. We are changing, we're recommending changing our practice on police false alarm calls for folks that have a permit. So, when you buy an alarm, you should be told by the company you buy the alarm from, you need to get a permit from the City of Glendale. That happens, unfortunately, not all the time. Some alarm companies are more diligent than others. As we look at the industry practices and we compare them with our practices, currently, we give you two free false alarms with a, if you have a permit, and then we charge you, I believe, on the third. Is that right, chief? And then, what we are recommending this time, as we look at our surrounding neighbors as to what they do, they give you one freebie and then charge you on the second one. That is what is contained in your fee study.
It changed what the other cities...
To go from two free, and then we charge you on the third, to go to one free, and we charge you on the second, without a permit. Or, sorry, with a permit. If you don't have a permit, we charge you from get-go.
And without a permit, before, we used to charge from the get-go, so.
Right. I believe so. That's right, yes.
So, that's not changing?
Right.
Okay. One more issue. I believe one of the issues we discussed last time, and I was going to get some explanation on, was the appeal to the, the appeal of the Planning Commission.
If we were going...
The increase was huge, from what I remember. Which item is that?
Oh, geez. I'll find it for you. And so, really, it comes down to council preference. If, the discussion, as I recollect from council, was if it's too low, we encourage folks just to appeal on a somewhat willy-nilly fashion. If it's too high, then it becomes so daunting that folks won't want to appeal, and perhaps they have a good case. And so, it comes back to the level that council wants to set. Let us find that for you for just a second.
Is there a similar increase for DRB appeals?
That I don't recall.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it's actually on page 39, under Planning Fees Number 4. And again, our cost associated with that was $8,120. Current fees, $1,041, and staff recommendation was to increase it to $2,000.
And what about for DRB appeal? Same thing?
DRB... That's, yeah.
They're the same.
Oh, so it's the staff recommends only 2,000? The increase is to...
Correct. Our recommendation was 2,000, which was lower than the actual cost.
So, the discussion being, should we go higher to discourage?
No, yeah, no. I'm sorry, I thought it was higher. 2,000 is good.
Can I ask a question? Who tends to appeal Planning Commission appeals, uh, Planning Commission decisions? Because with the DRB decisions, it's usually single-family residences. And I think in that case, 2,000 is kind of expensive. What about Planning Commission?
You know, it would, I would be hard-pressed to say that the trend is one way or the other, because both happen. Sometimes Planning Commission has made a decision that the applicant would like to make a change in some conditions and reduce conditions. And we've had cases where the Planning Commission approved something and the neighbors wanted the decision reversed. Really, they're pretty much split in the middle. There are not that many of them, but when they do happen, they tend to be on both sides.
If I may, for DRB, actually, our staff recommendation is 2,500. Our cost associated with that is $5,739, and our current fee is $1,172.
I'm not comfortable with that rate. You know, you've got a lot of people who are, you know, living, single-family, you know, DRB appeals tend to be a lot of single-family residences, and that's a lot of money for someone to pay just to appeal a project that's next door to them. I think that's high.
But on the other hand, I couldn't...
Yes, please.
That's exactly what it is. You've got a neighbor who's upset at the other neighbor, and for a paltry 1,000-whatever, they can delay his project for months, so.
What about 2,000 instead of 2,500?
Do I hear three?
I'm more comfortable with that.
I could go with...
I think that's more than 100% increase.
I could go with...
Can we change that to 2,000?
Sure.
It's the council's desire. We will follow whatever the council decides.
Yeah, I mean, I think that $500 to somebody, that's a lot of money to a lot of people.
I can accept that. I can accept that.
Second.
I do want to address this, we have two speakers on item 28, uh, 2, I'm sorry, 8F3, 2 and 3. It's Richard Lieboff and Catherine Jerk. I just want to make sure that that item's not, I mean, we're not going to hear that issue, so.
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know.
That was what I was going to say?
Yeah, okay. Excellent. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, now we have to amend 2. 2?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I believe it's a resolution, item number 3.
Not 2.
I don't know, any changes to, no, just 3. So, what I'm hearing so far is you would need to move the, when you get to move the item, but amend the fees for historic to the current fees, not to what was previously the staff recommendation.
2?
3.
That's both this district's and individual's.
Both for district's and for Mills Act. And then, for, is it Planning Commission and DRB appeals?
Just DRB.
Just DRB appeals, amending it back to the...
No, not back.
Amending to 2,000.
Still an increase, but 2,000.
Well, yeah, I just mean that the resolution has a higher amount, so you're lowering it with what's in the resolution.
Okay.
So, we can move 3 with those amendments?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Arsonanian?
And now, 2 can go clean?
I guess it's a question.
2 is okay?
Yeah.
Say no.
Yes, sir.
I'll move 2.
Roll call, please.
Same, thank you. Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Arsonanian?
Yes.
Budget is done.
Thank you.
After the polls closed.
Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited. The time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, further matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. Thank you. We have two speakers. Richard Lieboff, followed by Bill Weisman.
We'll change it after.
Yeah, five minutes.
I am Richard Lieboff, a 35-year resident of our gould city. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sonanian, other honorable council members, City Manager Ochoa, and other esteemed staff. As you may remember, I came before you at the council meeting of May 6, 2014, informing you of the potential demolition of a contributing home at 1555 Valley View in the newly designated Brockmont Park Historic District. You are as horrified as I at the possibility of the potential loss of a historic resource. My calling this to your attention, as well as a letter from the Glendale Historical Society, resulted in the change of this from going initially to the Design Review Board to being rightfully reassigned, as dictated by the Historic Preservation Ordinance and SEQA with City Attorney Intervention, to the Historic Preservation Commission, where it is scheduled to be heard this Thursday evening, June 5. In addition, an article appeared in the Glendale News Press on May 10, highlighting the proposed demolition. I might add, this article was during May, which I believe was Historic Preservation Month. So, and I think with, as we know, there was another article that was somewhat damaging, I think, to the city in that, regarding the property in the La Crescenta Montrose area. I'm here this evening because I am still concerned that this still could occur, even though the home is a historical resource and under the SEQA California Environmental Quality Act, and it was found to be historically significant, which was not, in fact, in the report of the Planning Division staff. Staff of the city's Community Development Department, in my opinion, have been giving out misleading information regarding this, and the planning report on this property for the DRB indicated it was exempt from SEQA, which later, the City Attorney, I gather, ruled it was not exempt from SEQA. Glendale, as we know, and has been discussed fully this evening and in numerous other occasions, cannot afford to lose these types of properties through demolition or any other means. I prevail on you to prevent this from happening, should an appeal be filed. And, you know, rumor has it that the individual that owns this home will, in all likelihood, file an appeal, but you can be assured, I will be here again before you, should that happen. But I think we do need, as I indicated at that previous council meeting, a reexamination of both the Historical Preservation Ordinance and the Design Review Ordinance, and how they interface with one another. So, I urge you, City Manager Ochoa, to initiate that kind of discussion with Mr. Higani and the Community Development Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lieboff. Bill Weisman?
Good evening, Mayor Sonanian, city council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from Far North Glendale. You may recall, I was here a few weeks ago to talk about the election and about some of the issues regarding precincts in Glendale, as with my own particular precinct, where we had a change of polling place, and I was somewhat concerned. Well, I'm pleased to report that there seems to have been a lot of effort made to mitigate those issues with polling places in Glendale. We did receive a postcard from Los Angeles County. We also received a robo-call from Los Angeles County the day after the postcard, and this was all, you know, last week, in the later part of the week. And we received, at the very end, a robo-call from our own city clerk, Arti Kasakian, encouraging people to get out and vote, and giving information on how to make sure you went to the right polling place. to make sure you went to the right polling place. The precinct that I live in, which I think is the farthest north precinct in Far North Glendale, has 606 addresses of registered voters. And I went around and hung a door hanger on the door of every single one of those 606 addresses. And boy, are my feet tired. But it was a really good opportunity. And it took me, you know, pretty much every day for a week to do this. And I finished up my own street, which is a 22-house cul-de-sac street, sort of as the victory lap on Saturday. And I had been working since the Monday of the previous week. And it was really a very, not only did I get a lot of good exercise, but it was a good opportunity to get out and meet a lot of my neighbors. And I found a few very interesting areas in my neighborhood that I wasn't even aware existed. And saw a lot of different kinds of houses and things that people are doing to their landscaping and stuff. So it was very educational, and it was nice to get out and meet the neighbors. And now that the polls have been closed for, I guess, almost 15 minutes, I'm sort of eagerly awaiting to see if all of that effort is going to come to anything. And I'll be able to compare the percentage of the voters in my precinct. And hopefully, it was more than it was in the last comparative election. So encourage people further in get-out-the-vote efforts. And I would like to advocate for continuing this particular program. And with the, all the assistance we got from the city clerk's office, it made it much easier for us to get out there and try and get out the vote in our neighborhoods. So I want to thank the city, thank the city clerk's office especially. And I'm going to go home and check out the results. Thanks.
Yes.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Weisman and all the other volunteers who went out to participate in this. I also got a door hanger. It was inside my mailbox, which they're not supposed to do, but we forgave them because it was for a good cause. So thanks to all the volunteers who were out there helping. That's what really makes the difference. I do want to say one thing about Mr. Lieboff's comment and ask, I know, I can't, I'm not going to talk about that...
I have a question.
Oh, because I just wanted to say something, though, not about that project, but about an issue that it brings up, which is what we do with properties that have applications pending before districts are created. I think it's something that we should ask HPC to agendize as a, in separate discussion, because it's too late to do it for tomorrow, and that's going to maybe have an impact on their discussion. But it's a policy that we should set before we run into this again, because it does bear on this particular case. But it just, we should have something in place so that people know, or that we know what happens in that instance. So I would ask us to, I would ask if my colleagues would support having HPC take that up and maybe us making some sort of policy decision. We shouldn't fly blind when it comes to that. That's all I want to say.
If I may, I also would like to address Mr. Lieboff's comment, because with all due respect to Mr. Lieboff, I take exception to his statement that our fine design review and Historic Preservation staff have been giving inaccurate information. That is absolutely not the case. Our staff, as I think was alluded by Councilwoman Friedman's comment, was simply trying to set a course of action for the applicant who applied for the design review of the, for the proposal for this particular site prior to the establishment of the historic district. And at the time that the application came in, it was still subject to design review. And in this case, staff, it was our responsibility to address the pipeline projects at the time that the ordinance was approved for the historic overlay. However, we neglected to address this one case that was pending. We normally come up with a statement that says the pending cases would be reviewed by this authority or that authority. And for the purpose of being consistent to our applicants, who are our customers, from the beginning to the end, we had directed them to prepare for design review. In this case, they had prepared for design review, and towards, at the very 11th hour, the historic district was adopted, and we had, with this conundrum, we had, we wanted to be consistent, but after consultation with the city attorney's office, they said to us, it would have been better if we had addressed that one particular application, as we always do in our ordinances. In this case, we had neglected to do that. We apologized to the applicant. We apologized to the residents in the historic district. This was simply a technical error. There was no misinformation at any level in any part. And in the future, we will be cognizant of making sure that pending applications will be addressed in such ordinances.
So do we have a, do we already have a policy in place about what happens to a project?
Yes. Our policy is that we address them at the time that an ordinance is adopted about pending applications and any kind of rezoning. In this case, we had this one application which we neglected to address and point out. We would, we should have addressed that by saying that this applicant has been in the process for the Design Review Board, and we would have recommended that the cases be put in the ordinance, that any case that is pending should have been reviewed by the Design Review Board, as the applicant had been expecting. And I must add, the Design Review Board is not a commissioner, a commission that is any less than the HPC in terms of taking into account all historic preservation.
So I'm sorry, I don't need to go off into a separate area, but I'm confused about, maybe at some point, you could explain to me what our policy is, because I'm confused about what happens if you have a project that's in the pipeline or pending or even approved.
If I can...
I'm not saying now, but it's...
I think, just briefly, I think generally, we cover it when we make the change, when we make the zoning changes, address. And I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Higani, we, at the time we brought that forward, there was an oversight that there was one application pending. If we had realized at the time we brought the zone change, we would have put in the ordinance that this shall go to, this particular case shall go to DRB. So the policy is...
So you're saying, see, I'm trying to understand this. You're saying your policy is that when you write the ordinance for that district, you actually call out a property?
We call out any, we call out any pending applications. And we say, these...
You put that in the ordinance.
We always do that. That's our policy. We address pending applications to be reviewed under the existing process to be, to continue the...
So normally, it's...
I'm sorry, is this something that needs to be agendized? Because like a 20-minute conversation?
Well, I'm trying to find out if it needs to be agendized. All I'm trying to do is to find out...
Agendaize and talk about it for 20 minutes next time.
Well, we may not need to agendize it. Why don't we take it offline and talk about it? And then I'll let you know whether I think we should agenda. All I'm trying, that's all I'm trying to find out, is whether we have a policy to cover this.
Okay.
What, you got somewhere to go?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Oh.
Move to your turn.
Yeah.
Asia, Garrett.
Yeah, let's adjourn in the memory of Alyssa Kiragosian, the poetess. Thank you.
Is there a motion in the second?
Move to the office.
Thank you.